I will make a motion to adjourn study session. Bell station? Is there a second? Hello?
Ricardo, second.
Oh, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? See none, so move. Alright, thank you very much. Ready? Okay, so at this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Meeting. Today's August the 17th, 2016. The time is 7:15. So, at this point, I will ask Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco to lead us in invocation, followed by the flags. So, I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so. Thank you.
Father, we're here today to gather together to serve our community. We're also asking you to bless our country and our world with all the terrorism going out throughout the world, with all the natural disasters that are fires that are we're asking you to bless all of our firefighters, our public safety officers, officers, medical personnel out there working to fight these fires and to help the people. Help our
Thank you. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Good evening. At this point, I will ask Madam City Treasurer, Maria Contreras, lead us actually in the attendance and we'll also recognize our city clerk as well, Ms. Dabla. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Councilmember Cruzbaca?
Present.
Councilmember Susan Revio?
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Potem, Monica Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present.
Thank you very much. Alright, wanna also, before we go on to the presentations, then open up the Housing Authority as well as the Finance Authority. So, that is my motion concurrent with the City Council. Any objections? See none, so move. Alrighty. Okay, so at this point, we do have presentations. We have the first one, the plaque that goes to Dr. Mario Jimenez, owner of Knoll's Pharmacy, to commemorate its 28 years at Ramona Avenue, for Dr. Jimenez's many years of service and dedication to the health of the Baldwin Park residents. So, at this one, I'll ask Dr. Jimenez if he could come up here, please. Thank you. Come on up here, Doc. Yeah, well, have you come up here. Knoll's Pharmacy's been there since what, the 40s?
Knoll's Pharmacy has been here since the 40s.
40s, right?
I'm telling you.
Oh, he went out all the way.
My brother, nice to see you, man.
Watch, he's gonna keep it.
Oh, absolutely. Real quick, before we get this up to Dr. Jimenez, those of you that may or may not know, Knoll's Pharmacy is probably one of the many old structures here in the city of Baldwin Park. And I visit the museum not too long ago, and you see the museum, so I believe it goes back to 1940s.
26.
Oh, 1926, okay. So, it's very old. So, I wanna thank you as well for preserving that particular structure as well and the long-term career that he had as a pharmacist. And you've had so many individuals that have been a part of that historical place in Baldwin Park. So, I'm gonna read this plaque. We're gonna have you say some words right now as well. Come on up here, Doc. That reads, "Dr. Mario Jimenez, in recognition of your many years of service to the city of Baldwin Park, thank you for your dedication to the health of our residents. We wish you continued success in your future endeavors." So, we'll present him with a symbol and the plaque of the city of Baldwin Park. Doctor, thank you, sir. Give him the microphone.
I'd like to say thank you to everybody here in Baldwin Park, because it's just been about half my lifetime spending time here. Made a lot of good friends, a lot of good people. I have Baldwin Park here in my heart. I'd like to also acknowledge my wife, Mary Frances, my son Nicholas, my son Eric, and of course, my accountant who guided me through the years and everything that I've done involving accounting, Ralph Galaz, and my two trusted employees, Nancy Aguilah and Esther Reese, and my good friend who stepped in, Robert Ojeda. But I've gone on to a teaching position at Western University in Pomona in the School of Pharmacy. And this is something that I had a passion of doing, and that's trying to recruit minority students into this field. And so, I was appointed Director of Diversity Initiatives. So, that is my goal. And in teaching, I'll be teaching fourth-year pharmacy students in entrepreneurialship. So, I'm pretty excited being able to segue into another journey. But as you all know, we, our lives are nothing but like an hourglass, and sand seems to grow. It's not stable for everybody. Some goes faster than others. But in the time that I spent here, it's been a very memorable one. And the sad part is, we all gotta meet our maker, and so when we lose someone that we're very close to, that we see two to three, even four times a month, it's very, very difficult. But Baldwin Park is a big part of my life. And now, they, I got a quote here I'd like to say, and that is, "The mediocre teacher tells; the good teacher explains; the superior teacher demonstrates; the great teacher inspires." So, on that token, that's how I'm gonna end my talk at this moment. But thank you, Baldwin Park. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, friends and family. It's been a memorable and treasurable time of my life here in Baldwin Park, and you all be missed.
Let's bring the family and all those that were a part of the Knoll's Pharmacy. Come on up here, we'll get a picture with everyone. Come on up, don't be embarrassed. Let's get one real quick with the doctor. Manny, let's do this one real quick. Oh, we fancy.
I have no choice.
I may be out of batteries. I think my battery's out. My battery's out. Hold on. Manny, hold on. We're gonna take one with the doctor real quick before everyone comes up. Sideways, sideways, baby, sideways. We're gonna do one real quick with the doctor, and then we're gonna bring everyone, so we'll have two separate ones, okay?
Can we take a few pictures? Please get a little bit closer. Grab a few devices. Okay, one, two, hold it. Next one. Second. Okay, here we go. One, two. Oh, there's a fourth, third, three or four. The last one. Now, three, please hold. One more, last one. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's bring everyone up, bring your family. Come on up, everyone. Thank you. Is your son? What happened to your
Ma'am, brother, how are you?
Let's get the family in here.
Hey, we'll take a few. Okay, we have a few. Okay, one, two, and hey, a few more devices. Okay, one, two.
Battery's low, battery's low.
Hey, last one.
Aquamanazo.
Very good, thank you.
Real quick, before I forget, Doc, tomorrow, you'll see your name on the marquee. Then, we're also gonna run something in our city newsletter, so all 75,000 residents will know the historical aspect that you played in the city of Baldwin Park and your beautiful family for being here today, as well as all the workers as well. Thank you, thank you, brother.
Very nice to meet all of you.
Alright, the next presentation that we have is by Jeff Allam, President of the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership and Director of Marketing and Communications, Regina Wang, who will be providing a demonstration of the SGV Economic Development Power Site. So, thank you very much for being here. Go ahead, that's fine. This is about three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Jeff Allred. I'm the CEO of the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, and with me is Regina Wang. She's the Director of Marketing and Communications for the partnership. And I just wanna provide you some brief information and again, also a brief demonstration. You know, the partnership was founded in 1991 by the cities and business community in the valley here. So, this is our 25th anniversary. The mission of the partnership is to work collectively to enhance the economy and quality of life in the valley here. And we are comprised of a wide variety of organizations in the San Gabriel Valley, including cities, water districts, educational institutions, colleges and universities, including Western University, which you heard tonight from Dr. Jimenez, also even K-12 schools. The business community and the partnership includes healthcare institutions, hospitals and medical clinics, manufacturing establishments, tourism and hospitality businesses, utility companies, biotech and life science companies, and so forth. And, you know, and I just came on board about three months ago, and we decided early on that we needed to provide our city members with a value-added benefit that will enhance the city's operations and their ability to attract national name-brand restaurants and businesses and improve the economies of each of the cities. So, this product we've come up with is called the San Gabriel Valley Economic Power Site. It's a website. We call it the Power Site because it does four powerful things for the cities. One, it provides, the first thing, it provides interactive demographic, economic, and industry data for each city. And this is important for business site selectors, investors, and brokers that are looking to bring their businesses into the city. So, this data is very important that is available for these parties. The second thing we do is we, the cities that are members can upload or list on the web, the Power Site, their key opportunity sites in the community, properties that they think they would like to see developed in the community or redeveloped. Number three, is we provide, this Power Site provides businesses, I mean, provides information on all businesses in the city. So, every business in Baldwin Park, you can find on this Power Site, which helps the city in numerous ways. And finally, this data, this demographic, economic, and industry data is very helpful in applying for grants. And so, the city of Baldwin Park, you'll see on the screen here, is like all the other cities in the valley that are members, have a Power Site or several Power Site pages. And we're gonna just take a few minutes and give you a brief demonstration.
So, over here, you can see we have over 20 city members, and each of them gets a website. And let me show you what the Baldwin Park site looks like. Right here, we have a city overview, and this is where we'll come back to see all the commercial real estate listings in your city. And right here is the community profile, which I know we're running out of time today, so it has a lot of information on your education attainment, your income levels, labor force, and business information. So, right here, it shows, the data is also interactive. Right here, it shows the manufacturing as a top industry by the number of jobs. So, right here, we see manufacturing. This is retail from 2012 to 2016. These are the number of jobs in this industry, education, healthcare, and so on. So, and this is the income level and distribution. It goes on and on, so I really encourage you to check out the site when you have the chance. And right here, we'll see two properties listed here. And let's take this property as example. This website tells you the information about this property, which is right here, and it also gives you the demographics information within 10-mile radius of this property. So, when you click on the demographics, it shows you the 10-mile radius and can change that to 1-mile radius. And this gives you the population, the age, the gender, and also different information, household income. This also tells you where, let's say, for example, people who make between $50,000 to $60,000 a year, where they live. So, we click on this twice and go up to this, the map. And here, you see, this is the heat map, which tells you the data by colors. So, you see, this is the concentration right here and right there, too, of people who make this income level. And right here, I wanna show you the business information. When you click on this tab, it lists all the businesses within 10-mile radius of this property. If you scroll down, you can go to see which these businesses are, what they are, where they are. For example, if you go to construction, and you wanna find out where the, let's see, the residential remodeling contractors are in your city, you click on this, this gives you the names. You click on this one, and you go up to the map, it tells you where you are. So, you can get a list of all the businesses in your community, which is a great way for your, to generate your business license fee, you know, which could be an additional income for the city. And also, right here, we also have local layers, which gives you information on, for example, where are all the power plants in the San Gabriel Valley, including Baldwin Park, and so on, and where all the schools are. This has a lot of information, and it's, you can even enter any address in Baldwin Park and get all the demographics and industry and economic data of that property. If you have any questions, please let me know.
I have a question.
Yes.
How did you gather up all the information to do this presentation, I guess?
Right, so we worked with a company called G.I.S. Planning, and they purchased the data from different sources. And so, the demographics information you see is updated twice a year by G.I.S. Planning. And the business information you see is updated four times a year.
I just have another question, just real quickly. We are part of the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, correct?
Yes.
And because we are, this information is free of charge to us as being part of the group that pays for, I mean, essentially, you're paying people to purchase information, but by virtue of being part of this organization, this is provided to us for free, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, I wanna share with you that next Thursday, we'll be hosting a launch reception for the Power Site. We're inviting our member cities, as well as communities of brokers, investors, and site selectors to come. We're hosting our own ICSC here in San Gabriel Valley, and I know that Baldwin Park will be represented, so we're very excited about that.
Alright. And then, I would just like to say how pleased we are that the city of Baldwin Park is a member. We're looking forward to working with the city as an extension of your economic development program, as a resource to you to enhance the economy in the San Gabriel Valley, as well as the city of Baldwin Park.
Thank you.
I just wanted to also thank you. It's very good information that you're providing us as members, and I think that it's really useful for our staff and other developers that wanna grow in this city. So, thank you very much for presenting that.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we're going to go to the next final presentation by MetroLink, representing to provide updates on the horn noise, train operations, and the proposed quiet zone. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Lozano and councilmembers. My name's Patricia, and I'm here on behalf of MetroLink. I'm here to give you an update on the BNSF locomotives. Just to give you some background, our board
Hold on, here comes a train.
Oh.
I'm just gonna, go ahead.
I planned that, just to let you know. Perfect timing. So, our board, about a year ago, we had an incident in order, we found, we did a safety assessment and found there were some problems or concerns raised about some of our cab fleet. And so, in an abundance of caution, they took, made a decision to invest in leasing some 40 BNSF locomotives to add as a buffer on our train sets. And so, when we added those, we tried to put them into service as quickly as possible as we continue to assess the safety concerns that were raised by this assessment. The BNSF locomotives do have a five-chime horn, which is different than the MetroLink horn, so they are projecting louder sounds. And given the proximity of the communities along the San Bernardino line, there are, naturally, there was complaints from the communities. And we held several community meetings and to respond to the complaints. But I'm very happy to share with you that our board did take an action in July to make an investment to actually fix the cab cars and get our cab cars up to par. And so, that is happening in, you know, through September, and we can start pulling those BNSF locomotives off as early as September and at the very latest by November. So, we are working, you know, feverishly. We wanna get rid of those BNSF locomotives just as much as everybody else does. So, our lease lends November 1st, so we're working very hard to get them off our systems. And so, I understand, you know, this has, you know, actually created an opportunity for us to continue work in partnership with the city of Baldwin Park and other cities along the, our rideaway. And so, you know, this is just the beginning of our conversation. You know, we continue work with the city manager, and we wanna continue to work with all the cities on how we can continue to address our continuous impacts to the community. And actually, we just hired someone, Sylvia Navoa, who's our Community Relations Manager, just got hired and just started this week. I think she's the second day here. So, she will be coming out and meeting with you, and she will be your, you know, the community contact. And so, we are committed to continuing our partnership with the cities and am here to answer any other questions.
Alright, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca?
I do, thank you very much. And please, really, a thank you to Mr. Ardley, who was here a couple of months ago. But we were promised that BNSF would not be blowing its horn at 4:45 in the morning. I live not far from here, and it's still waking me up. This morning, did I not only see two locomotives pulling, I mean, one, but there were two pulling. There were two BNSFs. I don't understand why, but actually, there were three, because there was two in the front that were going in the direction of San Bernardino and the one at the end. And I know, I see residents here that have also voiced their concerns about the noise, and we're really looking forward. Our staff has been working diligently and in working with MetroLink to make some of the quiet zones at some of our crossings. We have eight crossings in Baldwin Park, and we have all been very vocal, along with Covina and all the neighboring cities, Elmani and so forth. But I really do think that we need to work closer and see what we can do. The stress level is extremely high. Some people and children are complaining about not being able to sleep. And I myself, you know, I don't even have to set my alarm clock, because I know, I know I'm going to be woken up anyway. So, to expedite it would be great if we could please have, what's the name of the lady that's going to be?
Sylvia.
With Sylvia, if you could please leave your information, because I do get a lot of calls from a lot of our residents. Like I said, I see some of them in the audience today. So, if you could please leave the information as well, so that we can refer all the emails or the phone calls to her.
Yes.
We much appreciate it.
Yes, I, we did change the configuration, so I am concerned that you are still continuing to hear it, so we will look into that, because we did direct the changing of the configuration of the trains. But if you're experiencing it, then something's, you know, not happening, so we'll follow up on that and make sure that that's happening, because that is the immediate relief we do wanna provide for the residents at this time. And in terms of the quiet zones, we are, that is kind of the longer-term partnership that we'll be working with. I know Metro is, there was a motion introduced at the Metro Board, and they're going through their process of getting that vetted through their committee process and board process. So, I think they're talking about it tomorrow at their board meeting and at the board meeting next week. So, we're gonna continue to work with them on the quiet zones. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, anyone else have any questions? If not, at this point, now, go ahead, and we're gonna go into the public communication. So, anyone wishing to speak, please state your name. You have approximately three minutes. Hey, Mark, how you doing, buddy?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Monica Alber, and we own a business right across the street from the MetroLink station. And I would just like to tell Sylvia, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name. You know what? There, as far as the BNSF engines, there is a marked increase in sound. But the basic problem is the engineers themselves.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay, there's a guy that goes by at 4:50. He's a toot, 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 and he's in the intersection, and you barely hear him. Then, the 5:20 guy is ridiculous. And I, I'm sure that everybody else has experienced that, but I have noticed that. And so, the 4:50 guy, have him do the instruction to the engineers, because it is really annoying. And a lot of times, I'm on the phone with customers, and they really basically can't even believe how loud it is in our office. And so, I would like to hand both of you ladies my card, and if you would like to do a study on it, you're so welcome to come over and sit in my office from 8:00 to 5:00. I would love to have you.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Alright, moving on with public communication, thank you.
Hello, City Council, Baldwin Park residents. I don't know if you people read the paper. This is you guys. I'll read it to you, because I know you guys don't read the paper. Draining wallets just for changing some definitions over here, there, there, and there. You people are ridiculous. We didn't put you in office to steal the money from the residents of Baldwin Park. We put you in office to do the right thing, but you boy, you are foul ball. Also, you, as a lawyer, he knows who I'm talking about, these three people don't have the right to ask the citizens of Baldwin Park to pay for their, excuse me, quote-quote stupidity. You, as a lawyer, should know better. This is conflict of interest. What are they gonna do? Vote for themselves? I know, you're looking at me kinda funny there, but it's okay. You people don't have the right to take our money, throw it out to the courts, and expect us to say, "Oh, my God, you did something good." You're looking, you're happy about it. Fifty-some thousand dollars, and you act like it grows on trees. I really believe you guys think so. Of course, quote-stupidity gonna get you nowhere. Also, Manny Pacheco? I mean, I'm sorry, over here, young man, Manny? Why are you spending citizens of Baldwin Park money foolishly? You got jolted over at the school board meeting, and you still don't get the hit. What's the matter with you people? CEO? You guys make more money doing nothing and being part-time than people working their whole life. The mayor, all of you, the lawyer. What are you guys doing? You find excuses to raise taxes. What a bunch of, well, let me put it this way, quote-quote knuckleheads. We keep telling of, well, let me put it this way, quote-quote knuckleheads. We keep telling you, don't do it, you do it anyway. You don't care. Look at them. They smile at me. Especially that guy. The mayor, he tries to be a little conservative. Garcia, she's just laughing. She don't care. And the lawyer, you need to put on your britches and start telling these people they can't steal from the residents of Baldwin Park. Look at me. That's what you're doing. Fifty-some thousand dollars, and you act like it's fifty cents. You guys are wrong, all of you. And I hope you pay, somewhere along the line, you will pay. Oh, what do you know?
Alright, thank you. Very much appreciate that.
John Reels, resident. I'm going to start with you, Manny. You need to get some cajones under your pants, because anytime Mr. Pacheco, Mrs. Garcia feel like leaving, they just get up and leave. I hope you're not paying them. We're paying for it. We need to get some, what do you call it? Somebody with pants up there. You're the one that's supposed to be in control, Mr. Lozano, you know. It's totally ridiculous what you guys are doing, you know. It's a joke. It's a joke to all of you, you know. It's something that, ugh, how can I say it? It's something that you guys have to realize that the citizens of Baldwin Park are getting tired of it. They're already tired of it, okay? I'll let you go for right now. Mr. Carrillo, you told me that you guys changed the times for your meetings for the Parks and Rec. Look at it now, and it says 6:00. We had changed it to 6:00 so the residents of Baldwin Park could come and attend it. You felt like, change it. You changed it. You go to the school board meeting. That's embarrassing. You know, all they needed to, is for her to get up and slap you. You guys totally out of hand, spending our money for a study that school board didn't approve of it, okay? Then the young gentleman that's taking over down Walts, do a little research about Walnut Creek before you guys present that you guys need more money for education. That's the first thing that went in there when they were doing it. I don't know why you guys are going to need to more money, okay? It's totally ridiculous. You guys started the whole building on the opposite way, okay? Then you want to open the back gate. The residents of that street are totally out of hand right now. They say no. Will go wherever, but they would not want that gate. BJ is the one that put that fence up there, because of all the traffic that was going back and forth to there. Homeless, drug addicts, you name it. That's a quiet neighborhood. We're all retired. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good evening, John.
Good evening. My name's Joanne Watkins. I'm a resident of Baldwin Park. I live on Hallwood Street, and I'm coming to ask if there's any way that we could get speed bumps on our street, mainly because we have North Park at the end, and when those kids get out, they drive kind of fast down the street. We have elementary children walking to Geddes down our street, and no matter what, we can't go out there. We go out and tell them to slow down, they just laugh at us. But if they had speed bumps like they have on Bogart, on Phalen, and on Corvette, it would be, really slow those teenagers down. I would appreciate it. One more thing. You were, you were at the meeting when we changed the park and commission meeting to 5:00, and you were the one that suggested that, yes, you were. You did it.
Okay, alright.
He did it.
Just address it.
He addressed us because the two people worked, and it was hard for them to get there at 5:00. So, we all agreed to change it to 6:00. Now, the new commissioners do not have a problem with getting there at 5:10. And so, we went back to 5:10. So, that's the reason, and Manny didn't do that. The commissioners voted as a group both times to change the time, and I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Raoul Silva. I live at 3825 Big Dalton. And the reason I'm here today is to address a growing problem that's happening in my neighborhood, more specifically on my street. Has to do with the residents of Cambridge West Condominiums, located at 14801 Pacific Avenue. And what's going on is, not only is it becoming a public nuisance, but it's also becoming a safety issue. We have a lot of people, too many people that own too many cars there apparently, and they come and dump their vehicles on our street. Yeah, people coming and leaving at all hours of the night. And just a couple of months ago, my neighbor directly to the left of mine's house was burglarized during broad daylight, and everybody's like freaking out, everybody's cameras. I had to get a security cameras installed. And I think it's kind of unfair to us, because it's going to bring down our property value. And I mean, if they had, there's this gentleman, I don't know if he has a car dealership, but he could come repeatedly and dump two, three cars on our block, and not overnight. I mean, he'll leave it there for a week and a half, two weeks, and he's pretty familiar with Baldwin Park zoning, because he'll, he knows when exactly when to move it. And it's gone as far as that they'll, they'll look out for each other, they'll, they're buddies, and they'll drop off a car. And they've really got this down. But I don't think it's fair that our property values probably end up losing value. And like I said, our, my neighbors are really close. We know each other by first name. And nowadays, we don't know who's who, because we have so many traffic coming through, and it's become a really nuisance. And we, my neighbors are so nice, and for them to actually get fed up, it takes a lot. So, I think, I don't know, if we could find a solution for both parties. And when I say parties, I mean, the residents of Cambridge West and obviously, the people that live on my block. Because, I mean, I could, like, right now, I probably won't find parking at my own house. If you, if we go grocery shopping, we come back, they're parking halfway, we can't even get into our driveway. It's ridiculous. And, you know, like I said, they'll come at all hours of the night, 11:30, 12:00, midnight, 1:00. There'll be kids, you know, smoking weed in the car, and then they'll leave the car and they'll walk a block to where they live. And I, I think that's very unfair. I don't know if we could find a solution. It's really become a problem.
Alright.
Like I said, it's, and dispatch to the police department. I know you guys are very, very understaffed, but somebody's got to talk to the young ladies, answer the phones, because they're very rude, they, when we call. Because at first, we thought there were vehicles that were stolen or abandoned, and they would try to scold us and say, well, it's a public street. But we've realized it's a public street, even more reason for them not to dump their cars for a week or two. You know, it's a public street for the public. It's not their private parking. So, I don't know if we could find a solution.
I'm going to refer you over to Sam, and then one of the options may be get together, oh, excuse me, the captain that's back there, Parnell. The, I'm going to be very short, but maybe we could get all the residents to agree to parking permits. We did that on one street, so that may be an option for you guys. So, we'll get together with Captain back there, Captain Parnell.
Thank you so much for your time, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I know that we're in the middle of a public hearing, but I get, I referred some of the complaints on Petri to Manny Carrillo about a week ago in regards to lack of parking when people use the Barnes Park for soccer and so forth. So, I, I get a lot of these, a lot of these, about a block away from me, elderly couple also asked me to please call the police department for them, because there had been a car out there for like two weeks. It just showed up, just when they were going to tow it, the owner showed up. He hadn't moved it for two weeks.
Wow.
Almost a, a car that was probably a year or two old. So, I, I think we need to look and see. The parking situation's real bad in Baldwin Park anyway. But I think that abandoned cars or cars that are there for more than a few days, I think that that's an issue for the residents that live there.
Let's bring that up, so we could, study session, maybe have the chief maybe revisit that as well. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
Yes, Ken Woods, resident. Councilman Pacheco, you replaced Councilwoman Baca on the Foothill Transit Committee. And so, the first thing you do is you miss the meeting. What did you do it for? I mean, I hope it wasn't from a, maybe that green spa appointment or something, but you should at least attend to me. If you're going to take someone that's concerned, and then you replace them and don't even show up, you're not fulfilling your duties. I'm disappointed in you, as usual. And on a lighter note, I want the people I vote for, and the people that the people of Baldwin Park vote for, handle these large sums of money. I don't want an outside employee to be able to spend the kind of money that you have given them the right to do. That's our tax money. So, let's, let's reconsider that $125,000 cap. I mean, get it back to where it should be. Let the, and you guys control that money. We voted for you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright. Good evening. Moving on with public communication. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, good gentlemen and women. My name is Mr. Rogelito Subida. I'm a Baldwin Park resident. I live in the Park Shadow condominium complex. And I've voiced my concern already to Mayor Lozano. I already wrote him a letter regarding the dilemma, the problem that, or situation that I had regarding, I felt that I was unjustly penalized or punished by way of my vehicle being towed. I've already filed a claim against the city, and I don't know what, what will come about with that. But mainly, my, my real concern is because that I came over here is, is that the Baldwin Park Police has affiliated, affiliated themselves with Royal Towing. And, and when, when it is a city ordinance that, that is being wrote up or ticketed to the, to the resident or whoever, there is a particular fee for that city ordinance or parking violation. And granted, whatever it is, okay, we'll, we'll pay for it. But my, my feeling is, I don't think I should, you know, be, I feel like I was penalized again by Royal Coaches by them tacking on a big fee to tow my, my vehicle, you know, less than two miles away, when, when in fact, you know, I called them directly, and they said the towing fee is only $55, and yet they, 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 they charged me over almost $200 for the, for the fee. And, and my, my additional concern is that, you know, the Royal Coaches are closed during the weekend. And if, if a Baldwin Park resident was, or whoever gets ticketed on a Saturday, then they would have to wait until Monday to pick up their vehicle. And by that time, there's already three days that the, that the car has already been impounded, and it's $54 per day. And I feel, you know, that's, that's really unjust. You know, I don't know whether I-
Okay, we're out of time, but just let you know that I forwarded that over to the chief as well, so, and I'd say a claim. Alright, thank you. And we'll definitely be in touch and get back to you regarding that. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Angie Macias Mendez, and I'm the Teen Children Librarian at your Baldwin Park Library. I'm actually here to thank you, to actually thank everyone for supporting us and supporting our summer reading program. Manny, thank you, and also the school board for, you know, bringing out our flyers out. And this year, we had 648 children, adults, and teens sign up for our program. Last year, we had 461. So, we definitely had an increase, and so we do appreciate all the support that you guys provide, distributing our flyers, passing on the information. And I'm extremely proud of our community and our reading community, adults, children, and teens. We've had a lot of people coming in, collecting prizes and incentives for their readings. So, definitely, that's something to be proud of about our city and our children, especially our children. Now that school has started, next week, we'll start our teen advisory program. So, if you know any teens, please send them on to the library. We want to get them more involved into the city and, and the community. This summer, we had twenty teen volunteers. They clocked in 625 hours of their time. So, that, they provide free time. They help the children at our library. They help us with the programming. So, definitely, if you know any teens, send them down to the library. And also, in September, we'll start again all of our programs. And come on by. We're a great place. We've been renovated since 2014, so come on by and visit us. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lillian de los Segutierrez. I'm with LA County Metro, the San Gabriel Valley Area Rep Deputy, representing Metro here in Baldwin Park and other San Gabriel Valley cities. I just want to make myself available to the City Council and to any community groups in Baldwin Park that want information about Metro programs, projects, initiatives. We are providing information on Metro's Transport Traffic Improvement Plan that will be before voters in November. And so, we're available to make presentations on what that is and, you know, answer any questions you have about Metro.
Well, you know what? You said you could make a presentation? Is that what you said?
If you would like a presentation, we could have someone-
I want to do that in a future meeting sometime now in September. That'd be great.
That would be wonderful.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, can we have one of your cards or information?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruzbaca. Alright, at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Continue.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. The gentleman that was just up here, you should know that all these, Ricardo Pacheco, Monica Garcia, and Manny Lozano all got heavy donations from Royal Coaches. So, I don't think you're going to get much going in there. Manny Carrillo, last council meeting lied about the vector control. He lied at the school district, and he got himself in trouble over there, and they reprimanded him on why he wasted taxpayers' dollars to do renderings when he had no council approval. They did this little phony thing of doing a council vote to do grants before anything was done. Manny already had the rendering, spent over $5,000 of city money that just, you can flush them down the toilet. Like I told him, you're not going to get the soccer thing up there, just because Ricardo and Manny got heavy donations from the soccer leagues. The restraining order that Mr. Luna was talking about, the city pissed away $52,000 because of Ricardo, because he was afraid for his life. And his wife, too. We paid for his wife's fear for her life, and Manny, and Monica, and they wasted $52,000. That doesn't count Tefoya's emails that he read and what he charged the city. Then, I got a kick out of this on the agenda. Lozano's going to investigate what Susan Rubio's bringing up. It's like the fox in the chicken house. You guys created it. You guys did it. Why are you going to investigate it? You know what you're doing. You're allowing this Sid Masavi to go here with a free rein and run up to $120,000. If he runs over that, then he divides up the contracts. And I'm telling all the directors over here, or not directors, you better beware, because we're watching you too. And your jobs are on the line, too, and you can be in trouble- watching you too. And your jobs are on the line too. And you can be in trouble with this thing too. There's federal crime on that. Then we've got the paying of Sid Masavi on the planning. You know what we pay Sid Masavi to look at plans? 65% of the planning fee. 65%. We have one of his people on staff, $120 an hour, that we pay over here also on top of that because of our buddy Pacheco that gets cash money. And Manny and Monica got money when Sid had his new program that they were going to get $120,000. And it's all on their campaign finance thing. Now then, the farmer's market, told you it was a flop, told you it would never work, and it didn't. You didn't have enough vendors to even fill up the thing to have it last week. You guys are a joke. You don't know how to run businesses. The thing that you know how to do is steal money from the taxpayers. You don't know how to run a business. You need to let the people that you hired run businesses and quit making them puppets. Because that's all they are right now, is puppets. Your city manager's a puppet. Anybody overhears a puppet, I'm not including Amy, but I'm just saying, they are puppets. That's why two left, Dan Wall left and Mark left, because they had enough of your stuff. And they're not going to put up with it. And they will be testifying when we do go to court. And Pacheco, you still are going to court. So, any of the documents that I've said are here. If anybody wants to see them, I have them here. And you can see, that's not a lie. And $52,000 you pissed away to try to shut me up. It's going to take a lot more money than that to shut me up.
Hi, good afternoon. Really quick, I just want to thank the library director for the summertime reading program. Both of my kids assisted and they benefited tremendously from that program. So that's a good note. Now, the last time I was here, I asked about the preferences when it comes to the public housing vouchers. And Suzie did contact me right away regarding that. She said that the preferences were established after the lottery process. But based on the information I obtained at the Baldwin Park Fair Housing Workshop on July 3, and also information that I've been able to get online through HUD and, you know, mostly through HUD, it says that the public housing authorities may establish local preferences for selecting applicants by their family status. Also, it says that it may select to give priority to families that are part of their community living in, like the city of Baldwin Park or working in the city of Baldwin Park. Also, it says that the public housing authority must provide 75% of their voucher to applicants whose incomes do not exceed 30% of the area median income. I've looked into that and I am part of like the 50% of families who do not exceed that. There's just like overall information that I've gathered that I would like to discuss with whoever is above Suzie, or if I can meet with her to discuss all of the policies I have in question. I've also taken the time to read the Baldwin Park overview of the program and plan that was approved on July, I mean, I'm sorry, April of 2008. So I'm pretty much well informed of what should take place or what to expect. I just, I really would like to see it enforced.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Very well. All right. Moving along with public communication. Margarita coming up? Oh, go ahead. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm a new resident to Baldwin Park and I just have a concern that I wanted to express.
Sure.
I live on Foster and Avenue and there's an elementary school right across from the railroad track. So my concern is the parking. I've called the school district. I've called your dispatcher. They came two times and after that, nobody shows up. The concern is not only the parking. They parked like three rows and it blocked my driveway. In addition to that, it creates a lot of children crossing the street. So it's safety, it's the noise, and I'm just wondering, you know, they came the first time and then after that, it seems like it's just a brush off. So if you're trying to eliminate, I know I heard from the other gentleman, traffic and cars parking on the street, consistency needs to be done. If you come the first time, you should come again because people need to get ticketed. I'm not saying that it's fair to ticket them. I understand that that walkway right there is easy access to pick up their child. However, it creates a lot of traffic. And for the residents that live there, I know that there has been complaints and concerns that have been expressed, but nothing has been taken because it still seems to continue. So I'm seeking, what can you guys do? Because I've called. Go to the school district, call your police department. So what's the next step?
Yeah, you know what we'll do. I'm going to have the captain meet with you and as, thank you, Bardella, and as well as the school district as well. So involve both of the agencies. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, Margarita Vargas. I was at the school district meeting last Tuesday. And I just want to thank Manny Carrillo because he did a good job presenting the project. And they didn't approve it, but they moved it to the next agenda because the problem was that some of the board members are new and they didn't know anything about it. And I don't think that was his fault, but, you know, he didn't say anything. But so I'm hoping that, and I spoke at the board in favor of the project because my husband was involved in 2010 when they started it. And so I know it's something that's going to be good for the community. So I was, that's what I said there. The other thing that I want to say is the last meeting, I think the lawyer maybe can review the Robert rules. I'm in the board too, and I'm in the women's club. And the women's club follow the Robert rules like, by the, you know, I'm in the parliamentary, what do you call it, committee. And when you do a motion and you second it, then you have discussion and then you vote. And last meeting, you were doing it backwards. You were voting first and then the discussion after. And I don't see, you know, what good is this? What are you going to discuss something that was already approved? So I think, you know, you should revise that and let the city council know how the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on with public communication. Do you know further interest? And I'll declare the public communication closed. Let me just mention something real quick. All fairness to Mr. Tuttle. Interesting how he comes up here, of course, he's campaigning because that's what he does every year, just to let everyone know. And for those of you that are new, this person to the left with the camera has a permanent, has a permanent court order, restraint order against him by his wife and by his daughter. And that is evident. Of course, he can let him do whatever he wants. What he won't tell you, that he also costs the city Baldwin Park, frivolous lawsuit, $52,000, and tried to sue us for $60,000. And he took it up to the California Supreme Court and he got a big fat no, it isn't going to go. This is what this individual does. He is known as a congenital liar. This person will create every type of story you name it. And of course, I think what you need to look at is a history with his own family that doesn't want to see him around. Sad to say, the wife, the daughter and the entire family. For Ken to come up here and threaten the staffs, and I'm going to apologize on behalf of this individual here. He's a bully and he knows it. And this is what he does because this is what he's an expert at. He comes up here and fabricates information like no tomorrow. And some of the business owners themselves could tell you what he does to them. And I'll tell you one thing, I made it clear to him, I will never capitulate to this individual here, no matter what he does up here. Bring the evidence. I challenge you. As a matter of fact, would you just show the general audience? Bring it up so we can make copies for everyone. Bring your information, give it to the city clerk so that we distribute it to everyone. So, you know, I'm challenging. Give it, give it to her so we make copies so that everyone has. You want to be transparent, that's what you want to do. And that's where I'll end. All right. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and to thank- Hold on, may I just- Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
A quick question. First, I want to just thank our staff. Each one of you have done a great job in the city. I know a lot of you put a lot of hours here, working hard. And I want to thank you all. Manny Carrillo, I want to thank you. I know you went to the school board and you talked about this project that was, the project that these gentlemen were talking about was a joint use project to build a park, a joint use with the school district to build a park and some soccer fields, which I think was all of middle school. And you presented that project. I think you presented it very well. And it's for a grant that's coming up that we're working on. And so I want to thank your staff for doing a good job. I understand that the school board didn't understand it well, but it's going to come back for further consideration. So I want to thank you guys for the, for the great job that, you know, that you've done. But also, I want to bring up, I know that Councilwoman Garcia, I mean, the Councilwoman Rubio, has brought up a number of allegations in regard to invoices and issues of how our contractors get paid. Let me just make it clear that the council members do not pay invoices. We do not okay them. It all runs through staff. And they're the ones that okay a lot of those issues. But because she did bring that up and she did not provide us with what she was discussing, she did not provide invoices to all the council and to staff so that staff could properly address those issues. And I think that's unfair that she did that. And I would ask that if she has concerns, she's bringing those forth. Now, I did some research on my own. I was concerned with some of the issues she brought up. And Cruz Baca and Susan Rubio sit on a committee for the Civic Center project that they were doing. And they were allocated, they were allocated, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, but I am speaking. I am-
You know what, council member, it is not on the agenda. So you might want to wait public communication or agenda is in. Let's be fair.
What is public communications?
Well, no, no, no. But it's not on the agenda. It's not in the agenda. You got to be super brief.
Council comments.
Well, okay, I'll be brief. I'll be brief. Okay. So they overspent in that budget, they overspent it by about $2,000. They're the ones, and the project isn't done. It's not completed. And they overspent their money. And so when the time comes, we'll do a little more investigation and see how that money came about. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. And real quick, let me just also address Margarita who brought the parliamentary procedures, Robert rules of order. The city ballpark has never adopted a formality. And we obviously know there's over a dozen or probably, I think, over 36 different types of procedures that could be followed within the city ballpark. The Rosenberg's one of them, and there's a multitude of them. So, and I think that the way the meeting was handled the last time, it may have been in reverse for Robert's rules of order, but it applies different than several others of those, of those type of parliamentary procedures. And if we need to adopt one, then we'll bring it back, or we'll bring one to the city council.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think we need to adopt something.
Sure.
That's one more thing. One more ordinance that I think that our legal advisor is, legal counsel should look at, if you please, because I did get a lot of phone calls and also comments in regards to the Roberts rules. The way Mr. Contreras was sent out of the council meeting was also questioned. So I think that we need to take a good look at it and follow the rules so that even if there is a council member on the dais, they can't interrupt a discussion just because they don't agree with what someone's saying. It's a matter of respect. And you would do that anywhere, not just on the dais. You wouldn't just interrupt someone when they're in the middle of something because you don't like what they're saying. So I just think that it needs to be reviewed, please.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Cruz. Mayor Potem, Monica Garcia.
Thank you. And I'm glad that you're raising these issues because what I've observed is that when an item is agendized, there is discussion, there is a vote, and then there's more discussion, and sometimes there's another motion. And so I think that, yes, you're absolutely right. We do need to follow Roberts' rules of order. And along those lines, I also want to encourage everyone up on this dais to really be wise with the time that we have here in the city council. And I think it's only considerate of our audience members, those who are here for, you know, legitimate reasons. And then, of course, our staff who have very long days and who have to report, you know, back to the city very early in the morning tomorrow. I think we need to use our time wisely. And let me give you an example. Over the last two council meetings, one item has repeatedly been mentioned by Councilmember Susan Rubio. And that item is the vector control item where it's, I think we reviewed it for about 20 minutes, at least at one meeting. And she was asking why we spent $30,000 on a consultant who was going to conduct the community outreach for the vector control district. And I don't understand why we spent that much time because if we look at this report from February 17, 2015, this is a minutes and the agenda item that basically we give direction to staff stating unanimously a 5-0 vote. We want you to go hire a consultant up to 30,000, 29,000 to conduct the community outreach. This was a 5-0 vote. It's here in the minutes. The item is, you know, clear as day, black and white. And there's really no reason for us to be spending, you know, valuable time going over these items. Perhaps it was a lapse of memory or, you know, but I would highly encourage that we come prepared to this meeting. We do have a week in advance. I'd also like to perhaps recommend that if we need more time, let's have the agenda developed, crafted on Tuesday, well before the council meeting, so more than a week in advance, so that we can review these items and the items of concern with staff. And there, you know, we can hash that out before this meeting. And if there are still, you know, areas of concern, by all means, share them and let's all address it. But I just really want us to be wise with the time. And just because we don't, we forget things or because we haven't done our homework, it's really not fair to the rest of us who are here to take care of business and do it efficiently. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman, Mayor Potem.
Well, can I respond to that?
Yeah, Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Because, you know, I heard doesn't do her homework, wastes time. But let me tell you, I do do my homework. And this is not the original report. And Shannon, I think you can speak to this. This is a second report where we did approve the money. But the original report led us to believe that we needed to pay, that it was mandatory to pay for a consultant. And I've already discussed it privately. Because we were given two options. Either pay the low cost of $29,000 for a consultant or the high price of $90,000. So when I'm getting those two options, I truly believed I had to pick from those two options. So I picked 29,000. And that's where this report, second report that she presented, came from. But originally, that should have never been presented that way because vector control assumes all responsibility. And we shouldn't have any cost associated to this. So I take issue when I'm told that I have two options, pay 32, I'm sorry, 29,000 or 90,000. Of course, I'm going to pick 29,000. Later, when I did do my homework, I realized that we didn't need to pay anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, really quickly, again, just some information. On this report that I've just circulated to everybody, and if the audience would like a copy, I'm happy to give you mine. The alternatives here, the city council could, and there are four alternatives. Proceed with the advisory vote at a lower cost of approximately 29,000. Proceed with a Proposition 218 vote at a higher cost of approximately 90,000. Proceed with annexation without an advisory vote of the residents. So that means that we would have taken it here on this council. Or fourth, do not proceed with annexation at this time. So there were more than two options. And again, I don't want to spend a lot of time rehashing things. I just ask that we are all prepared, that we are all transparent, and let's just move forward with the business that needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
And I'll continue to take issue with that. Not prepared implies I haven't done my homework. I haven't read. And believe me, I spent plenty of hours looking at this. And yes, there were options. But once again, if you go back to the original conversation, my main concern was going out to the residents, speaking to them because we didn't want to raise their taxes without them knowing. I never said we need to go to a consultant. In fact, we've done that many, many times without a consultant. And Manny Carrillo and I have had that discussion. We've always done it in-house. And when it was brought to us that we had to go to third-party consulting, like I said, I was led to believe that somehow that was mandatory. But we've always done it in-house. And so, I'm sorry if I'm concerned that our residents are paying for something that we should not have paid. I just also want us to be more mindful that if we can do it in-house, I prefer that route. But I understand wasting staff and residents' time. However, we don't get to see some of the contracts. So I don't have any other way of expressing my concerns and asking my questions when we don't get to see the contracts based on the limits that we have today. So I'm sorry, when I don't see the contracts and it gets done, and after the fact, I get to see all the money that we're spending, I believe I have a right to ask questions. And I believe my residents, you know, the committee that elected me, want me to ask the questions. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, and one more thing.
All right. Hold on. Mayor Potem, yes.
Just looking at the minutes from- Just looking at the minutes from this date, February 17th, this is the item, uh, number nine, advisory vote to join the San Gabriel Valley Vector Control District. It is recommended that the city council provide staff direction to, and there was a five oh vote, conduct an advisory vote of residents on joining the vector, vector control district to appropriate the necessary funds up to 32,000 and return to the city council with the results of the vote. So that's exactly what happened. It was a five and oh decision. We have to, again, if, if you're not prepared to make a decision on an item, then abstain. But don't rehash it three to four months later when we're just trying to move business forward. That's all I, that's all I'm asking. And the reason, the reason why I ask is just, again, to be mindful, to be respectful of everybody's time here. That's all. Thank you.
All right. All right. So at this point, let's go on to, uh, consent calendar. Any council members wishing to pull any items?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, yes.
I wish to pull item number one.
Yes.
And item number four.
Okay.
Mayor, I wish to pull item number three, five, seven, and eight.
Uh, Mayor.
Hold on, hold on. There's no seven, eight here.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry.
Yes, there is. But that's in, uh, reports of officers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then we'll deal with it later. Thank you.
That's fine. That's okay. All right. So at this point, I'm going to go, council members, at this point, uh, we're going to move actually, well, actually, they're all up, right? Oh, no, with the exception of item, uh, two. So that's my motion to move consent calendars with the exception.
Second.
Okay. Any other objections? You know, so move. All right. So at this point, uh, the first one is, uh, requested by Councilmember Cruz Baca, which is the warrants and demands. Councilmember?
Uh, yes. And this is very appropriate as a follow-up to what, uh, Mayor Potem Garcia said, because this is a prime example of wasting time. Um, I have here the warrants and demands, a copy of the warrants and demands. Del Sol Solutions, which two weeks ago, they were not able to give me any real concrete reasons. And I have their new invoices in front of me and I'll go over them right now. We paid them $15,600, um, August the second, August the second, um, which includes two or three invoices. Now, when I see two or three invoices all clumped in together like that, I start to wonder, how can a company stay afloat and not bill every month? What is there, that they're hiding that they don't want me to look at or they don't want someone to look at in order for them to justify their invoices? They, um, they have here that they, they are looking into grants for musical instruments of $8,000, uh, through the Fender Foundation and met with Eurico and Maria on June the 16th over at the park. They have also met with Kaiser Prevenente in regards to some, another 25,000 for Walnut Creek, which I feel that Manny Corio has always come up with the grants and his staff as far as Walnut Creek and a lot of our parks. I don't see why we're paying someone at the tune of $3,900 a month in order for, in order for them to get, do the same results and do everything that our staff is already doing. So we're paying a consultant, plus we're paying our staff for what they're doing. I have copies of this and it's public record, if any one, of the check dated August the second for $15,600 to Del Sol. I have yet to see a report from them. I have yet to see a presentation from them. All that I see are things that are hypothetical that are in the pipeline. And yet there's invoice after invoice that's piling up here at the tune of, again, $15,600. The next one that was on the warrants and demands was, uh, the AIM consultants. And the AIM consultants take it even a step further. The AIM consultants charge $172.41 an hour. This is what they have on their line item. Monthly internal strategy outline preparation, three hours, internal. Is, isn't our staff also working on that? That was from June the second. The other one is meeting update with members Pacheco and Garcia for six hours. That was eight, that was close to $1,000. What could have been discussed for six hours when these two council members can't even sit here for three hours without leaving? And they say that we're wasting time. Six hours at $172.41 an hour. Here's another one on June the 23rd. Phone call update with Man, M. Corio for June 21st meeting with members Pacheco and Garcia. Again, it was, it was half an hour. So it's half of $172. So it's $85 that we paid them so that they can confer with Manny Corio about the meeting that they had with Garcia and Pacheco. It goes on and on. This is in our packet. I didn't make this up. I, I, I take it back. I requested it. It is public record. I requested this particular one. Then there's also you, Mayor Lozano. You met with them for an hour and a half. It says on progress of implementation strategy. What was that? What implementation strategy of what? On June the 28th, um, on June the 29th, they met with De Vellis of the Bike SGV. And from what I understand, like I said earlier, that implementation of that bike safety is being done by three different consultants, including what council member at that time, Marlon Garcia had started in 2011, along with the supervisor's office at that time, which was Gloria Molina. Now, on June 30th, there's another four hours to meet with Mr. Isaac Cuchia regarding development and operation of app relative to creation of ballpark community calendar. I have no clue what that app is that they're talking about. Because I remember that we've introduced apps for people to, to call, call code enforcement or check with code enforcement or to check with our public works. Anyway, they charged 40 and a half hours at the tune of $6,982.61. That check was written on August the 4th. I think that we need to stop payment on this. And there is proof of this because these are records that I requested going back, starting a month ago in regards to all checks paid to consultants. I was very specific when I sent my email to Shannon, our CEO. And I have, I didn't bring them today because it's volumes of invoices and checks that I have gone line by line to see what they're charging for. Who is cross referencing with whom? Who is having meetings for six hours? I would like to know where they met for six hours. Was it, because it was during the week. It was on a Tuesday. So it had to have been in the evening because I believe that both Pacheco and Garcia work unless it was a day when they took the day off. But I really feel, and the other thing is that they're charging for, they're charging for conferring with council members about certain things. Why should we be paying for that? They should be coming to us and giving us the report. And that's what I would like to see. Instead of them just giving us some flimsy report and we're putting out all this money. I want payments to stop until we can investigate this to all the consultants and including all of the infrastructure, advanced infrastructure, AAE or whatever else they're called. I want all payments to stop until we can investigate this. I agree with you, Mayor Lozano.
May I add something to that? Well, okay, let's, let's assume that they do need to report to council members. My question is, I mean, based on, on the total that she just mentioned, I think it's like maybe $1,200 conferring with three council members.
Yes.
Then why not bring it to this council member so all five of us get to hear that information? I mean, after all, that's taxpayer money. So I not only think that we should hear the information, but also the residents. It's their money. And I'm, you know, I'm really shocked that you're saying that, Councilmember Cruz Baca, because we have a dais, we arrange special, um, meetings so they can make representations. And I've yet to see one after paying them all that money. And I'm just really concerned that they're only presenting to three council members. There's five up here. Now, you see, when I'm told not to ask questions up here, then when do I ask? Because they're not meeting with me. So this is the time that I have to ask questions. So I would encourage them not to meet individually. Let's invite them to present to all five of us because I think we deserve that respect. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, excuse me, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, uh, first of all, you know, this is like, for example, the committee that both you and Cruz, you, Cruz and you were on, where you guys met with, uh, with a consultant to design the, uh, the Civic Center Park. And you guys, uh, went over your budget. That didn't come to the council. I have proof here. You could see these, uh, invoices that I have here. And, you know, and this work was never completed, Cruz. I mean, I'd like to know what happened to the architect that you worked with that you paid something like $507,000 for. We'll pass that down. Susan, maybe you can answer this.
I could answer that absolutely. You want me to answer that?
No, right now, because I'm talking. But when I'm done, you can pass those down, Susan. I mean, I'm going to be transparent. I don't hold back.
Well, that's fine. I'm, I'm ready to answer all your, all your concerns.
And I'll answer those questions.
There was some money, there was some money.
I did my homework.
Allow, allow him to continue.
Uh, that was allocated for this project. And you guys went over, uh, by about $2,000 and never came to the council for the over that you guys went to. The project was never completed. And yet you guys allowed them to get paid. And there's something wrong there, Cruz. I need to find out why these issues take place and why it is that you guys are continuing to, uh, uh, these kinds of projects. You guys worked together, you and Cruz, you and Susan, and you approve these projects. Matter of fact, I have the, let me give you the staff report. Here's a Civic Center project, the first one that I have here and it's proof, 226,394 was one of them. You can pass that down. Oh, here. I have plenty for all of you.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I, I mean, I, I think we should be this transparent. I think when Susan makes these allegations about staff and trying to make it, uh, that it's staff fault and they're not doing their, their job, I think it's wrong. I think you should come here, talk to staff, bring the, the information forward, and then talk to us about it. Because half the stuff you all talk about, we, we as council, I don't see any of the documents that you're talking about. So you could keep on talking and making accusations that, you know, I don't have the information. But I want to provide you with what we have. So you, you were both, uh, there was both, um, reports, one for 226,394, another for 270, 279,020 and 500 and, so that's a total of 505,014. Now, you, but you guys paid them on the invoice, uh, you know, more money than, than your $507,000. And the job wasn't done. So how can you come here and tell me that these jobs aren't, you know, that, that anyone else is here is not following the procedure? You guys didn't follow procedure. And that's wrong. There needs to be investigated and a look at it. What happened, uh, to all that money? I mean, I'm just, you know.
Unbelievable.
Unbelievable is, is you, Cruz.
I have to answer.
Allow, allow, allow him to finish.
I'm not done yet.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. So then on the, um, uh, what item did I have here? Okay. On the Berkshire contract. Okay. Hundred thousand, $100,000. Okay. And Susan's sister, Blanca Rubio, brought this information to you, Cruz. Cruz, you're the one that pushed for the Berkshire contract. And as a result, we paid her more than $100,000. And a lot of that money was paid out of general fund, not, it can't be paid from the, from the, uh, the funding that they're, that they're trying to save money. So we didn't really save any money. You know, in a sense, we just gave him all that money. And eventually ended up giving money to, to, uh, to Blanca Rubio, which then went to you in the form of, of a loan and contribution. So I don't know. I don't know what's going on. Well, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what I'm seeing. And you're making all these allegations yourself. And I'm looking at, at the behavior of both Cruz Baca and Susan Rubio and seeing, and I've got all these documents. They're all right here if anybody wants to look at them. So I'm just concerned about, I'm sorry. If you speak again, I'll have you excused from this office. From this dais. Okay.
First of all.
All right. So hold on. Allow, allow him to finish and then we'll go.
Okay. So you keep looking at all these invoices, but ask staff, I mean, get a, get a report from staff. Let's get the vendor, you know, to respond and, and staff to respond and get to the bottom of it. I mean, that's what I think we need to do. But, but both of you failed to, to want to do that. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. So I could, he asked me to answer.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, and then we'll go to you.
Mayor, I was going to answer his questions.
No, but hold on. Allow her first in order to, go ahead.
Thank you. So I just wanted to make a comment on, um, Ames. I have met with them several times. And so the six hours, I'm sure accounts for the, the multiple times that I've met with them. Now, I'm not opposed to them just coming here and briefing the full council. They do do work with staff. They do have meetings outside of the council. But I would be perfectly fine with them coming here and giving, you know, their reports to the full council. Um, that won't, that still, you know, won't, um, be the entire communication because like I said, they have meetings in between and they've been meeting with county supervisor Molina's office on, I'm supervisor Hilda Solis's office on our behalf. So I'm sure that they will continue to, you know, account for those hours and those communications. Um, but as far as, you know, specific items that are of concern, I mean, sure, let's address them. But I think it's only fair for us to all have a copy of this invoice to see who assigned it, who's, um, you know, looking at these hours specifically, who's cross-checking. Because sure, when I'm contacted by, you know, stakeholders, by constituents, and they're asking for a meeting, I'll meet with them. Um, now, do I tell them, go and document, you know, go and charge the city six hours because of this meeting? No, that's not true. And, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what you're trying to allege here. But I have met with them several times. Um, we, Ricardo, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco and I were part of this ad hoc economic development committee. And so, you know, it was appropriate that we were meeting with them to understand what it is that they want to do in our downtown area, what partners and stakeholders they wanted to engage. And so, but I'm perfectly fine with them just coming to the city council and reporting to the full council.
Okay. Mayor, now may I answer some of the questions? Well, of course, I'm glad to, to respond to that. Just to clarify, the meetings that Mr. Pacheco was referring to is, um, an ad hoc meeting that was created two years ago with the permission of the council because it was brought to the council and it was voted on. The idea was to bring a park plaza across the street where right now it's currently vacant and it doesn't look aesthetically, you know, pleasing. And so there are, there were around 700,000, I believe, monies that was, um, tax dollars that are specifically designed to build open space. And so that money was sitting there for a long, long time. And considering how, um, like I said, it doesn't look very beautiful outside our city hall. We decided to figure out how we can use the money that was, um, actually set aside for, for open space and create something beautiful across the street. At the time, we did bring it to the council. And I can ask, um, Shannon to pull it because we already pulled it. It was brought to the council for approval. It was approved. Uh, once we started meeting, uh, it was agenda, I'm talking about the ad hoc committee. If I'm not mistaken, Manny Corio, remember, we were, every meeting we had was agendized and we would meet separately and everyone was open to, to come and join us. It was open in the third floor, open to the public, open to come and give input. Um, and then when the project was completed, it was brought here twice. Two faces wanted to show the progress of the project. Then the last one was to show the 3D rendering that we eventually came, um, to create. Now, he's, uh, Mr. Pacheco saying that that project wasn't completed. Let me remind you why it wasn't completed because when we were ready to move forward with it, after spending so much money on it and two years of planning and designing and really being very strategic about possibly, um, um, making, um, income, at the time, Mr. Pacheco decided that he wanted to give that land to a developer to build 72 apartments. And it's something that it hasn't been hidden. I mean, we've been very vocal about continuing the project because we felt that an open park would be more beneficial to our, to our residents. And that is why the project got stopped. Not because we chose to stop it with the full approval of the council and we could bring all the, um, the agenda items. We moved forward with this project, but it stalled because they decided to move forward with 72 apartments. And everything is agendized and open to the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cruz Baca, yes.
Um, yes. And the one thing that Councilmember Rubio forgot was that we had two public hearings where Mark Castanola and the architect and some of our staff and of course the residents, uh, we had it at the avocado room at the community center. We had two meetings, one in the evening and one in the afternoon so that the seniors would see it as well in the community center. But we did have public hearings. We got comments from some of the residents that we deserve this park. They, it was a wonderful idea for them. So it was, there was no hidden agenda about this park. Mayor, you yourself said that it was a great idea. Last year at the street fair, you announced that it was a great idea. I don't know if you remember or not, but you did say that it was a great idea at that time. We felt that it was a go. It was nothing hidden. Everyone was welcome to the meetings, like, like Councilmember Rubio said. So there was not, there was nothing hidden. On the Berkshire, first of all, there have never been any loans or contributions. I don't take loans from people.
Yes, you do.
Or the bank. I do not take any, if you've got proof of me taking a loan, I want the paperwork, please. Because I did not take a loan from Mr., from, it's Rob Horowitz. The name of the company is Berkshire, but it's Rob Horowitz.
It was Blanca who took the loan from him. Go ahead.
Hold on, hold on. Let, allow her to finish, Ricardo, please.
I'm sorry.
You specifically said that I had taken out a loan and contributions. That is not true. I am not going to call you a liar because I don't believe in that. But that is not true. If someone else did, I have no, that is no concern of mine. But I did not. If you have proof that I have either taken a loan or contributions from Mr. If you have proof that I have either taken a loan or contributions from Mr. Berkshire, Rob Horowitz, or whatever his companies are called, please show it to me because you need to refresh my memory because I forgot and it's not convenient that I forgot. Number two, Mr. Horowitz is not under contract with us as of March of this year because we did not renew his contract. Number three, he only got paid upon the money that he saved us. He saved us over a million dollars by rerouting the transit center and raising the fees. There is proof, I will get it for you, there is proof. He, in fact, at one time, his original contract said that he was going to charge 20% of any fees that he saved us. His fee went down to 15% after the first year. I have proof of all of that. So I, yes, Shannon, you can write it down if you'd like so that, so that Monica can have it. As far as all these invoices and all of the checks that I have, I don't need to produce the volumes of paperwork. I made the call and the email to Shannon Yatsi, our CEO. He produced me with all the paper copies as well as an email copy of all my requests, of all the checks, of all of our consultants and the people that are working for us at this time. So I suggest that you do the same thing because I am not going to produce and waste printing time bringing you volumes of the work that I have been working on. You can call yourself, you are council members, you're entitled to this information just like I am. So that is, the proof that I have are the checks, the flimsy, the flimsy invoice invoices. I have never known or worked for a company where someone can write a check just based on a flimsy invoice with no legitimacy of meeting with council members for six hours or whomever it is. How come they never met with, with Councilmember Rubio and myself? As far as I know, she just mentioned it right now, I didn't know that they hadn't met with her. I didn't, I didn't meet with them and if I would have known that they were 172 dollars an hour, I would have said, hey, wait a minute here, I'm not meeting with you at that kind of money. You meet with me to give me some backup or to give me follow up as to what you're doing or we will meet with staff, but you're not charging me 172 dollars an hour. That's more than an attorney charges for the love of God.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah, but I have the floor.
Go ahead, he's gonna go on, then you'll go, go ahead.
Okay, as far as, I know you did, but I, I had the floor before you did. Uh, I just want to say that, uh, you know, with Ames, Ames has done an outstanding job. There's a lot of work that they've done in the community with the city. They've sent a lot, they send the reports uh to the city council, you get them monthly if not more. And they know that they meet with staff quite a bit. And some of the successes that we've had in working with them is they've been able to, we're at a point where we're working with the county to do joint projects. And that's what a lot of the discussion is about. And that's the work pride, to go out and talk with the county and create a, a committee that we're going to be able to work on a lot of the, the county areas that the county has to be able to do uh projects with. And, and that's the, the value that they've been bringing, that's what they've been talking about. It's in the reports, if you don't read their monthly reports, that's where they have it at and that's the direction that we're going in. So there's a lot of progress being made in working with the county and being able to use their resources to bring in here to the cities. That would have been done before, our previous director didn't emphasize that and didn't go for that kind of a resource. And that's what we're looking at, is being able to uh expand our, our base and our resources and a lot of what we're, we're trying to do in the community. That's what a lot of this, uh, this discussion is about. But the question going back to you isn't that, you know, the civic center, I know you want the ad hoc committee. The question to both Councilwoman Rubio and Councilwoman Baca is this, is that you were allocated 505,000 for that project and you guys are, uh, charged 507,000, okay? Yeah, it's a small change, it's 2,000 dollars over, but, but they didn't produce a completed project. And at that point, it wasn't the park itself, we weren't talking about construction, we were talking about uh design documents. And they didn't finish that and they didn't return it, yet they got paid and then they got overpaid. So I have concerns as to how did that happen under your guys' watch? How did, how did you guys allow these invoices to go through and, and, and not get paid? You know, I assume it was you or staff, but somehow the work didn't get completed, you know, which is design uh specifications and construction drawings, didn't get done and yet they got fully paid. So, you know, I have a concern, you know, where it is that, that, that extra money went to.
Um, Mayor.
Susan and then I'll come in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Susan.
Well, and I have to reiterate, of course the project stopped because we were not gonna spend any more money since the land was designated, you know, you decided to get the land to a developer for 72 apartments. So why would we continue, spend any, even a penny moving forward with something that came to a halt? And all of you that have been to our council meetings, you remember how hard I fought because we had already spent such a significant amount of money, uh, resources, staff time. We spent two years of our time with staff designing it, uh, really like engaging the community as Councilmember Baca said. We took uh, um, community input. I mean, there was a lot of things that went into it and of course, I will reiterate, of course it didn't come to completion because we had to stop it. Once you decided that you were gonna give the developer the land for the 72 apartments, why would we spend one more penny telling them, give us specifications for something that clearly was a project that was not gonna get done? So yes, of course it didn't get done because we decided, why spend any more money? Once we knew that it wasn't gonna go a goal, it wasn't gonna be done, we just told them, you know, we're not gonna pay you any more money. So we had to stop it, there was no point moving forward. But I also would like to clarify earlier, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco says, you know, I, I think it's not fair that you're saying that staff is not doing a good job. I mean, I really want anybody here to, to remind me if I ever said that. I don't think I've ever, ever expressed any concern with our staff. It's never been about our staff. For me, it's always been about the money and the spending of the money. I've never questioned the quality of work our staff produces. In fact, the opposite is true. I've been, you know, fighting for our staff to be the ones doing the work. I've said it over and over again, our staff is capable, qualified and excellent employees and they've always done the work in-house and I've repeated that over and over again. Let's let our staff do it in-house because that's how highly I think of them. Because I know they could do a good job and we're not gonna be paying thousands of dollars at 172 dollars an hour. Now, going back to the county, you said that Ames working with the county. Councilmember Baca and I also met with the county and Hilda Solis's staff. And we actually went through the whole process and they were telling us about the possibility of working together. And during that conversation, we realized, once again, it's something that our staff can do. Some of the phone calls, the meetings, and we spent, I think, three hours with Hilda Solis's office.
And it needed 100 dollars.
Right? And we didn't pay that much money and we really wanted to figure out, is it something that our staff can do? Absolutely, simple phone calls, emails, our staff can do that. Maybe they can take on the, the, you know, harder projects. Um, maybe when our staff cannot make it, they can go out and, and, and do that for us. But I believe they can make, they can do that. And so, first of all, I just want to make sure that I've never questioned the quality of work our, our staff does. I've been fighting for them to do it in-house and I really will continue to push for them. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Oh no, Councilwoman Rubio continuously uh, uh, questioned the invoices and, you know, I, you know, city council does not handle the invoices. I mean, I don't look at contracts and, and see the work day to day. I don't, I don't approve the invoices, but yet you question those invoices, therefore you're questioning the work of staff. I mean, staff, it goes through a process, each invoice gets processed through staff and they approve it. And if you're not agreeing with these invoices, then you're not agreeing with staff. And I think that's the issue that we have. But also, I, I did not bring in the developer, I mean, I Ricardo Pacheco, uh, I am not the king of Ballin Park and I don't run this council. I, you know, it takes three votes to do anything in the city council. And so there was a majority of votes, unfortunately, didn't support your project and, and we're looking at this project. So when you say that Ricardo Pacheco, I, I have no uh influence on, on, you know, on a particular project. Now, let me go back to these invoices because you keep avoiding the question. You violated city policy and you, and you just stated that, that you stopped the project. You cannot stop work, you or, or Cruz Baca individually, I don't know how you communicated to the architect to stop work, but he was to produce a set of drawings and specification, which he never did. Uh, and you guys were allocated some 500 and 5,000 and you went over, he was paid as complete and then 507. So when you guys talk about projects that are paid and not completed, this is the one you were both overseeing. This is the project that, that you guys, that never got done, didn't complete it or come back and say, well, we're gonna pay you less because you only completed 95% of the project and therefore it's, it's done. So that's, that's the issue, we need to look at that, how, you know, where would the project go, where, how far did it go? And why were they, why were they paid over 2,000 dollars over what was approved for? And that's the question that I have for both of you.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
The renderings were completed, everything was. They even had, um, and we can get it from staff for you. Um, Dan Wall had a copy of the aerial view of everything and the different phases, starting with phase one, which we had worked on, the pavilion that was going to be built, how the street was going to go out towards the Methodist church. And then phase two would be to incorporate city hall and, and eventually have like bleachers or whatever, which would be a veterans walk or a veterans recognition so that if you were at the pavilion and there was music there or the choirs or whatever it is, the participation of our residents or our schools, you could sit almost like an amphitheater seating, like the grand park that's in downtown Los Angeles, would be very similar. There were three phases. All of it was completed, that was showed to us, maybe you weren't at that particular council meeting or at that special meeting, but I'm sure that Sam, because Dan Wall had it and he sent it to us, um, when I requested it via email about a year ago. Um, I'm sure that Sam can find the renderings and it was completed, everything was complete. It was getting ready for the, for the shovels to hit the ground. When you came in with that development project and everything had to be put on hold, of course, because now there was not going to be a civic plaza and you were very vocal about that, that you did not want a civic plaza even though we had many studies at the time and even Supervisor Solis has said that we need green space and open space and that Ballin Park is park poor. You still for, for moved forward and forged ahead and said, no, we're going to go ahead with this development. You brought Mr. Walburn in to do the presentation and the rest is history, but the renderings are complete and everything is as well. Like I said, there is like a video of what everything was going to look at and I'm going to ask Sam Gutierrez, please, if you can find it or maybe get ahold of Mr. Wall and see where it is in the archives or whatever. If not, maybe I can find it in my emails. But I'm not done yet, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm not done yet. But I think that for us to say, and I will reiterate what Councilmember Rubio said, for us to think and to question the invoices, staff is more than qualified to do the work that we're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to do. And it's, I know, we've got, Sam Gutierrez said that he's going to San Diego tomorrow to see about the MetroLink grant for the, for the quiet zone. I mean, are we going to pay someone else 172 dollars an hour or 50,000 dollars to drive to San Diego to do the same thing that Sam has been working on for such a long time? That knows the residents and hears the complaints here at the council meetings every two weeks? I really do believe that we need to very, very diligently, I'm not the one that signs the checks, but it is our responsibility to look at the warrants and demands. I have been doing that since I was first elected as a council member. I have had many questions where I have gone to staff or to Marie Contreras and said, what does this mean? What is this about? I have met many times with each of our department heads to ask them about what is on the warrants and demands. It just so happens that these particular consultants, I feel, have not justified the work. If they can justify the work, I will back off, but they have not justified the work for me. So why are we paying people that are not doing the work? It doesn't make sense and it's taxpayers' money.
Okay, one last one, that's it, because this is not agendaized.
I would like to also comment.
Real quick, and then the last one, then that's it, we're gonna move forward.
Okay, Ames has done the work, they provided staff reports and they have done a, a lot of the work. But again, the question goes back to you Cruz, is that a, a project was not completed under your watch.
Excuse me, stop interrupting, stop interrupting, stop interrupting.
And it was.
Stop interrupting.
2,000 dollars.
You have a choice not to attend, okay, stop interrupting. Stop interrupting. Stop interrupting. Stop interrupting. It's incredible, incredible.
Okay.
Of course it's not what he's doing. Hey, excuse me, you know what, that is totally uncalled for.
Okay Cruz, you went over, the, the project was approved for, for a certain amount, you guys went over, okay? You're, you're talking about projects that are incomplete and get paid and that's exactly what happened to your project, okay? I mean, it should have been done with drawings and all that and you guys are making these accusations, you're questioning these invoices, that staff approved, that it went through staff. So, you know, I, I don't know what, what you're trying to allege.
Mayor.
All right, at this one, then we'll go, then we have to end it after this.
Okay, you know, this has piqued my interest. Um, I was looking at the report regarding the civic plaza design agreement and the cost for services include very specific items. And so if Sam or Shannon can answer, did we in return get a legal description? The answer will be yes or no, right?
Yeah, uh, I'm not, I'm not fully familiar with the project, so I'd like to.
I think, I think Sam can sort of answer the question and I think, you know, we did get renderings. But the contract was very specific and there, and Sam, you can clarify this because I know he looked into it, I asked him to, um, that there were construction drawings um required and I think that is the part that is not finished. Sam, is that correct?
Okay.
Uh, that is correct, I have spoken.
Thank you.
I've spoken to the architect and he confirmed that the project is not uh complete and it is not biddable at this time. It did not go to, through city plan check.
Okay, so there was um, an amount of 505,000, it went up to 507,000. In return, we were supposed to get legal descriptions, site survey, schematic design, design development and construction documents. That was part, that was a scope of services for the amount that we paid. So they have not provided us with construction documents?
Uh, they have sent me the, uh, the, the current status of the plans and, and the construction documents.
So we do have the construction documents is what you're saying?
They have the construction documents, but they are not uh 100%. They're, they're at about 85% because it needs to go through the city plan check and the building plan check.
Oh Mayor?
Yes, no, no, that's it, let's just agendaize this. Let's agendaize.
Well, well, let's continue, we'll, okay, we'll talk about it.
Why don't we, it's, it's not under.
Mayor, but I did agendaize it separately, so may I talk? It's in the agenda, I did put it in the agenda as a separate item. And instead of doing it later on, I want to do it right now, if that's okay.
That's fine.
You know, there's a difference, you know, because you keep saying your park, your park. I just want to clarify, it's not my park, it's for the community, it's something that the community really fought for. But I'll just leave that aside for now. Um, and you know, and we're talking about plan checks for the plaza and this and this and that. I mean, at that point, once you, the developer, uh, once, you know, the land was given to the developer for apartments, I mean, it just almost seems useless to waste any more staff time, any more money. And I get what you're saying, but again, you said that we didn't complete it. We were not given that ability to complete it. That land was taken away and anybody that remembers, I fought really hard specifically, you're mentioning the dollar amount that was spent on that park. That is why I fought so hard for it because that is money that we as a council approved and it was almost completed and then it got stopped. And I thought that that was a, a great value to the community. They deserve an open space, we've had residents come up here and talk about it and say that they were for it. But um, one of the reasons that I put it on the agenda, at, at the end of the agenda is right now, Councilmember Pacheco said, you know, we don't sign it, we don't see it, it's pretty much on staff, you know, because they sign it. But let me tell you, we did that to them because we used to have a cap of 10,000 dollars where the staff could only approve 10,000 dollars. And then if it was past 10,000 dollars, then the CEO would have to approve 25. If it went more than 25, then we would have to come to the council. And what the council majority here did is they raised that cap to 125,000 dollars. That means anything under 125,000 dollars, we don't get to see. So I apologize if we're wasting people's time, but guess what? We get to see it after the contracts for over 100,000 dollars are approved and I have two. Um, and we get to see it after the work has been done and then we find out after. So of course, after, we're gonna have to get the information and question it. Now, you said it's staff's responsibility, I think it's our responsibility. The residents of Ballin Park elected us to be responsible for that money and at the end of the day, when things don't go right, they're gonna question us. And I don't feel comfortable answering those questions when I don't even know what the money's being spent. The agenda item that I have on the agenda is pleading with the council members to bring it back to the original price, taking that responsibility away from our, our employees because really, that's a big responsibility for them to carry. If something goes wrong with the project, we get to say, just like we heard right now, I don't sign it, I didn't do it, it's not us, it's staff. Well, I don't want it to be staff. We were elected, we're responsible, whether we succeed or fail, we take the blame. And so I really want to plead with the council to go back to the original 10 so we take that burden away from our, our employees. I mean, I don't know how you guys can handle being responsible for 120,000 dollars, please. And then, at the end of the day, see this discussion, it goes back to you, staff sign it. That's exactly right, we should be signing it, we should be. We should be signing it, we should be responsible. The people didn't elect staff to spend $120,000. And if you have 10 projects, like around $100,000, that's a million dollars we don't get to see, we don't get to approve, we don't get to spend, and we are responsible. So I really want the responsibility back on the council. So I plead, Mayor, I think that knowing that, see, this discrepancy came about because we raised that cap. So let's get rid of the discrepancies. Let us be responsible again. Let's bring it back down to 10,025, so we don't have to blame staff, and we can be responsible. I'm willing to take that responsibility, because we were elected to be good stewards of this money, and I really plead with you, Mayor, that we put it on the agenda next time, and let's go back to the original price. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. At this point, we're gonna, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, I think Susan Rubio just demonstrated she has a lack of understanding of municipal government. We are the city council, we're the overseers. These are the directors, they do the actual work. Now, if you're asking us to review every single invoice and go to every contract, and this one that we're looking at, you're discussing the professional services agreement, but then, you know, with construction contracts, construction contracts are well over $1 million, they're $2, $3 million at a time. There's a lot of approvals that are going on in the field for change orders and a number of other issues that go on, to pay the invoices for the contractors, for the asphalt, concrete, workers, all that stuff. And if every time you had to come back, over $10,000 to come back to staff for a construction project, because you had to approve something, the construction project would never get done. It would be stop and go, stop and go. That's why we allow the directors or managers to have a certain amount to allocate to be able to continue to move construction projects along. And it just so happens that construction projects are in large amount of money, they're up in the millions, there are hundreds of thousands. If we have a professional services for an inspection group, and that person's doing an inspection that's gonna last four or five months, if every time, two or three weeks go by, and then you had to pay his invoice, but he got to come to council, that means you're not gonna have inspection for a period of time until his pay got approved, and then he can go back out and do the work again. So that just makes it inefficient for staff to be able to work. And this amount of $125,000 is not for all directors. This is specifically for public works because of the large amounts of money required to be able to pay the contractors and construction managers to be able to get a project completed. And a lot of that is, remember, a lot of cities have a higher amount, a higher cap for public works directors to approve projects and to continue to move them forward. And so it's not just Ballin Park, but other cities. So I think some council members have a lack of understanding of how construction projects work and why they need to have that amount. Now, the project gets approved in city council for 3.5 million. And at that point, the public works director will go and hire a group of construction managers and inspectors, and then they do the bid, so they hire the person who's gonna do the actual construction work. Now, it's never been that those contracts come back or those invoices come back to council, because we allowed the public works director to oversee that project and continue to move the project all the way until completion. So that is all done ahead of time, and for us to say, you know, we're gonna put in these amounts, these limits that are so low, I think it's just gonna stifle a lot of the work that is done. And a lot of this is explained in the staff reports that dated September 2, 2015, under item number six. So anyways, Mayor, that's what I would say.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, hold on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first of all, I think that you're absolutely right. I mean, we are elected to represent, you know, our community and to have the accountability to our community. And so if there are concerns, and I really, Manny Carillo, if you can hear this, I really want all the directors and everybody here, you know, if there are concerns at all with any review process, with any, you know, absolutely bring that to the entire council. And we want to address that together. If there are any concerns on how money is being spent, on, if there are any concerns on invoices, I think that every one of us is interested in taking a look at that and figuring that out. Now, when we put you in this position, we felt that you were competent to, you know, carry out the review, to, you know, go through the processes that are set out by state law, by local laws. And so I have put my confidence in you, in, you know, in saying, Amy, you know, with the planning processes, with the permitting processes, you know, Sam, we've talked about it, you know, should you have any concerns about some of these low bidding contractors, you know, raise them to us, which you have. Rose, you know, we've talked about it here, if there are any opportunities for our internal staff to be misusing funds, we've discussed that, and you've assured us, you know, that there are checks and balances, and I clearly remember that conversation. But if there's, you know, Manny Carillo, you know, we've taken on different projects and have tried to be really good stewards as far as, you know, outside funding, restricted funding grants, you know, some of the internal programs that we have here and just, so if there are any concerns, I highly encourage you, bring them to us. But I also have the confidence in you that, you know, I'm not gonna be micromanaging every single thing that you do. I mean, if that were the case, I might just resign as a council member and say, hey, let me come and be a director for the city of Ballin Park, and let me be here, you know, 40 hours a week, Monday through Thursday, and be doing all the work, you know, either side by side or, you know, for you. Now, there's a lot of work that goes into preparing for city council meetings. And so if we honestly believe that we're gonna sit there, you know, an entire week and prepare with you for this council meeting, I think that not only are we delusional, but I just don't think that that's the best use of time, having two competent, you know, people doing the same work. Again, if there are concerns, I want to know about them. And I think that every one of us feels that way here. Now, as far as the cap, you know, let me be really honest. I was getting calls from people wanting to do business with the city of Ballin Park when that cap wasn't stated. They were telling me that they were sitting with Susan Rubio and Cruz Baca, and they were being asked to, for fundraising for, you know, assembly member or for the candidate, Blanca Rubio.
We're not talking about somebody else.
Excuse me, hold on, allow her to speak.
You may present, you may present this item from your perspective as, you know, we need to reduce that cap, it's irresponsible. But on the other hand, because it was such a low cap, it also provided the opportunity for lots of meetings with lots of contractors and lots of people that wanted to do business here in the city and who were having certain conversations about fundraising. And so, again, I put my confidence in staff. You have, yes, you, each one of you holds great responsibility, you know, to us and to our community. And I know that you guys are doing the best that you can. If there are any concerns, please bring them to us, because we definitely want to address them together. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
First of all, I would really like to speak to whoever wanted to do business in the city of Ballin Park, that I sat at a meeting with them, with Councilmember Rubio, and fundraised, because that has never happened. And I would like to really sit down with them face to face and let them tell me that I asked them for funds for Blanca Rubio. I have never fundraised for anyone except myself. Never have I fundraised for anyone myself. We could, if we're going to be, like they say, don't throw stones at glass houses, because I have also met with people that also said that they met not only with you, Monica, but with Councilmember Pacheco, and that they were bullied into decisions, especially from Councilmember Pacheco, about decisions that were made at the city. So, you know, let's forget about the allegations unless you can bring these people forward. I'd be glad to meet with them and talk to them and say, when was I at a meeting with you and I fundraised for anyone except for myself? And there were no strings attached. When I meet with people and I have fundraised, I never promised people anyone. I don't care who they are. So that, right there, here we go again. I would say, so that it's not called a lie, that is an embellishment in order for you to try to okay whatever's going on. The $125,000 cap, the city was able to function without it for the longest time when Vijay was the city manager. As much as I was not a fan of Vijay's, I do have to say that the city did function, even though it was at a snail's pace, but it did function before the $125,000. When you give a cap of $125,000, you do have, I'm not talking about our staff, I totally rely on our staff to come up with the grants and the things and get the work done, but outside sources come in, and it's very easy for them to manipulate that $125,000 or more monies that's going on. So that is why I would like, at least until we can investigate these allegations or whatever they are that we have found, I would really like to lower the cap to 10,000, as Councilmember Rubio said, until we get all this clarified, so that we don't end up like South Almonte, Cudahay, Vernon, and the city of Maywood. I strongly advise that, for us to do that at this juncture. And also, thank you very much, Councilmember Pacheco, for giving me a lesson in construction. You forget, I was born in construction. I was born in construction. I'm sorry. But all that stuff, I, from the beginning, when they were using mixers by hand and my grandfather was digging cesspools, they called them back then. So thank you very much for enlightening me on the construction business.
Mayor, okay, so let me just finish...
All right, thank you. At this point, yes, go ahead.
My item. Number one, again, he just said, you know, that we stifled construction by going to, by having 10,000. That was the existing cap. That's how we functioned for so long. Let me ask Sam Gutierrez. Sam, you came from West Covina, correct?
Correct.
Do you know what the cap is in West Covina?
It's 10,000 for the public works director and it's 30,000 for the city manager.
City of West Covina, 10,000 cap for department heads, and you said 35 for CEO.
30,000 for the...
30,000. That is the typical. I've asked a couple, I mean, there might be an exception, I don't know, but a few cities that I asked, they all follow these limits, because ultimately, there is room for mismanagement now. Councilmember Monica Garcia said that she relies on staff, and so do we. But, and you also said there's checks and balances, so I'm gonna be very specific about checks and balances. So if anybody wants to write this down, and I will provide copies at a little time for the council members. I have a contract here for $106,510 for the Sangue River Bike Way Project Design Face. This contract was signed by our staff, approved by our staff, April 4, 2016. I have two checks here. One for $5,325, February 16, when this contract didn't exist. I have another check of $10,651 for the month of March, once again, when this contract didn't exist. So I'm wondering, how do we have a contract that was signed in April, and we've paid $15,000 for February together with March? How does that happen? If this is our checks and balances, then I think we're in trouble. I've looked, I've asked, and I've tried to justify these, and I still can't find the answers. Now, I'm not saying anybody's to blame, but this is the reason why we need to bring it back, so that we could be more careful how we spend our money. I would like to really reach out to this company that I have here, because I want those $15,000 back. The contract is here, and because he says that I make things up, I want legal counsel to look at it. If you don't mind, can you tell me when this contract was signed?
April 4, 2016.
Can you read the dates on the checks for $15,000? One for 5, one for 10?
2/29/16.
And what's the amount?
$5,325.50.
What's the next one?
The next date is 3/31/16. The next amount is $10,651.
Once again, and the contract didn't exist. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's just make sure we get copies, because I think it's unfair that...
Absolutely, you'll get copies. And he just read it.
Hold on, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
I would also like copies, and who would be overseeing that area?
Copies of which one?
Of this, of these documents.
Well, the Public Works Department is managing that contract that was signed by the previous Public Works Director in April.
Okay, and is there any record of why those payments were issued?
I do not have a record, and I would like to review these invoices. I reviewed this project in particular, and it was signed on April of this year. All invoices that I have at my disposal that I've seen are after the contract, so they start in May. So I have not seen these invoices, and I would be happy to review them and to see if they're part of the same project.
Mayor, can I show another one thing I have?
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, you know, let's take a look at these payments, see what services were rendered for the payment, and then please come back to us with the report at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
At this point, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, I'd also like to see we get some money back from the contractor who did the Civic Center, because work was not completed, and they got paid, I don't know why they got paid more money than was actually allocated, so...
You want to agendize, you want to agendize that?
No, we're just looking, I'm gonna have it in the agenda to review all this, so we could do it under that point.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, and just really important, because, you know, I know that Dan Wall was our public works director, and I don't want any, any like, you know, insinuation somehow that he did something inappropriate. Because it kind of seems, right, he's gone, he'll probably get the blame. So what I did is I did further research, and I wanted to know what he recommended. I have two staff reports here that he asked for, he asked several companies to submit their proposals, and there was four companies that submitted their proposal, and he went with, I think it's called Somus, what is it? What's the name? Do you know the company?
Yeah, you're correct, it is Somus.
Okay, that was his recommendation. It's in a form of a staff report. That was his recommendation, because this company had done the bike project for Elie County, and he had experience. It was the best price, you know, according to him, and that was his recommendation. Not only once, twice, it came once in the form of the agenda item to a council meeting, and it was polled by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. It came back a second time, because this was his recommendation. Once again, it got polled, and at the end of the day, we ended up with this company already discussing. So I just want to clarify, Dan Wall is not to blame. He had his recommendation, and for some reason, his recommendation wasn't followed. Right now, Councilmember Monica Garcia said, we put trust in our employees, we trust that they're gonna make the right decisions. Well, guess what? Mr. Downwall did, and somehow, his recommendation did not, somehow, it wasn't taken, and we ended up with this other company. And so once again, we need to bring those caps down. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Again, this is a staff issue. If it's supposed to go, you're blaming staff again, I mean, you're trying to say, but yes, you are. It goes through staff, staff's the one that approves all these invoices, contracts, so they're working on it, so, you know, from what you're telling me there, it points back to the formula of direct republic work, but we'll look into it some more.
Absolutely. I have to say, I do not blame Dan Wall, and I hope everyone heard it clearly. He had his recommendation, I mean, staff can only do so much. He not only recommended it once, he recommended it twice. So once again, I want to make sure that Dan Wall, somehow, his name does not get muddied here, because he did not bring this new company. His recommendation is here, it's in a form of record, if anybody wants to see it, I'll provide it. So that was his recommendation. Now, if something went wrong with the company that he recommended, I can totally see we can blame him for it. But we did not take his recommendation, we rejected it twice. So at this point, I just really want to take Dan Wall's name out of the equation, because I don't want somehow, there's to be any insinuation that somehow he is to blame for this, and I'm not blaming staff.
Mayor, I don't know, we did the investigation, falls where it falls. I mean, this is all staff works on all these invoices. I'm sure we can ask, you know, the contractors and staff, what, you know, how this all happened. I mean, I don't know, there's an explanation, but we'll have to get down to it. But Mayor, I guess, Councilwoman Rubio, do you want to make a motion, and then we can move on?
Yes, I've already asked, not asked, pleaded with the mayor.
I asked, did you make a motion?
Yes, that we move forward with next council meeting to bring back the $10,000 cap and $25,000, and we could do 30, like West Covina. West Covina is a much, much larger city than ours, and they manage with $30,000 cap, why can't we? So my motion is, Mayor, that we allow this, at least to bring it back, until we can kind of look at some of these, you know, items, and let's figure... and let's figure out where the money's going, and where it's going, and why it's going. We cannot just say, "Let's look into it," that's not good enough. I really want to make clear that I'm pleading with the mayor and the council members to bring it back down to the original cap. If West Covina, that's a bigger city, can handle over 30,000, so can we. So Mayor, that's my motion.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Yes.
The item agendaized?
Legal counsel, are we gonna say something?
That we bring it back?
So this is to bring it back?
No, no, it's a direction to staff to bring it in a form of staff report, bringing back the caps lower to 10, and if we want to go 30, that's fine, like West Covina. So it's an actual direction of staff to bring it back as an-
As agenda items.
And at the time, if you want to not approve it, that's your prerogative, but I think it should be on the agenda, so we could all have a chance to vote on it, thank you.
So at this point, it was motion by Councilmember Susan Rubio, second by Councilmember Cruz Baca. Okay, and there was one objection.
Yes.
And Madam City Clerk, at this point, well, yes, legal counsel.
Can I clarify the motion?
Yes, sir. So basically, there's a motion for it to go, directing staff to bring it back so that it would be reduced to about 30,000.
Yes, directive to staff.
Directors to staff, thank you.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
No.
Mayor Manuela Sano?
No, the motion fails 3-2.
I'll do a substitute motion. I do a substitute motion.
Okay.
I do a substitute motion that we bring this back at the next council meeting for consideration of the $10,000 for our different department heads, and 30,000 for the CEO.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor at this point.
And I'll second it.
And second, and, okay, one objection, Madam City Clerk, or City Treasurer.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Council, Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
No.
Mayor Manuela Sano?
No, motion fails, the substitute motion fails, the vote is 3-2. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead and move on?
I'm still in number one, believe it or not.
No, that's fine, I got all night.
I have one, so do I. I have one more, I have one more question, and this is in regards to something else. And I just need clarification, this is for Manica Rio. This summer, staff summer barbecue, was that the luncheon In-N-Out thing that we had the other day? It's for $499.28, is that what that was for?
No, that was not, that was, the $499 and some change, was a summer, end of summer staff appreciation at the community center.
Okay, that came out of the general fund?
Yes, it did.
Okay, do you customarily do that, it comes out of the general fund?
Yes, it does.
Okay, there's no donations or something you could go after in order to? I know it's only $500, but I know In-N-Out donated, and that's when, I want to send, direct staff to please send In-N-Out a thank you, a letter, please. Because In-N-Out, it turned out that they ended up donating the 250 hamburgers, or what was it, that-
Yes, 250 hamburgers.
So, in the future, do you think we could do something like that? I know that if you came to some of the businesses in town, they'll give you the 500.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that, oh, yes, I, oh, and I have number four.
You know what, I have number-
My turn, or does somebody have something?
I have number three, quickly.
Is there a motion for number one to approve, or what?
She has number-
Put the motion on, number one.
Oh, I'll make a-
Motion?
Well, my motion is that we hold off in paying some of these invoices. That was my motion, that we hold off, in particular, the Ames. I know that these have already been paid, but in the future, I would like for the Ames, or the September warrants and demands, I would like for Ames and for the Delsol to please be held for further investigation. That is my motion.
Okay, there's a motion, second, any objections?
I object.
Okay, one objection, Madam City Treasurer, roll call.
Yes. Councilmembers Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
No.
Mayor Manuela Sano?
No, the motion fails, the vote is 3-2. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead and go to item, the, yes, go-
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion to approve or deny warrants and demands.
Okay, all right, so at this point, anyone wishing to-
Motion to approve warrants and demands.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Second, any objections? Okay, Madam City Treasurer, there's an objection?
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilman, Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No.
Mayor, if I can just add a quick note for the person that's reviewing those invoices, I'm not sure who would handle that, but just, you know, if you could have a very close eye on these invoices, just to help address some of the concerns.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
No.
Council, Mayor Manuela Sano?
That's everybody, you did it, ma'am.
Yes, okay, so the motion, the motion passes 3-2 for the warrants. All right, so item number, are we going to four?
Well, I did put three, but this is really quick. Just for clarification, I'm starting, only because I always want things to be transparent. This is the same item you brought last time, but it's just, the resolution number was incorrect, and so you're bringing it back just to correct-
Item number three.
Yeah, number three.
Yes.
Okay.
So you're just bringing it back to correct the rest, the number, correct?
That is correct.
And there's no changes to the staff report or anything else?
The staff report's fine, we're just changing the resolution.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve it, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, there's a motion, second?
Second.
Any objections, see none, so move. All right, so at this point, item four, which is approved, and adopt Resolution Number 2016-146, entitled "A Resolution to the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park Establishing a Partnership with the County of Los Angeles in Support of Its Homeless Initiative Strategies Efforts to Combat Homelessness." And this is by Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Yes, and I just want to say thank you so very much for putting this on the agenda. I had requested this, because I belong to an ad hoc committee that's a part of Supervisor Solis, as well as the COG. And one of the things that, the, all the cities that are in the East San Gabriel Valley, we all decided that, we all share the homelessness, because they're transients. And what's counted in West Covina is counted in Baldwin Park, because they travel back and forth. And so, this homeless committee and this resolution is very important, because it will help bring some of the dollars into the East San Gabriel Valley to see what solutions we can come up with to sort of combat some of the problems. And I want to thank staff, and of course Shannon as well, for following up on this when I did forward what Supervisor Solis's office had sent me. So I make a motion that we go ahead and pass this resolution.
There's a motion, there's a second, any objections, see none, so move. All righty, then we'll go down to item number five, which Councilman Susan Rubio, people of the men employment agreement with Shannon Yatzie for the position of Chief Executive Officer, Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, this is an item that we had discussed before. But because it is, you know, personnel, and I really like to just, I have a couple of questions that are just not clear to me at this time, and I would like to ask a couple more questions. And once again, because it's a personnel matter, I would like to bring it back next council meeting, if I may, thank you, Mayor.
I'll second.
All right, the second, and any objections?
I would object.
All right, there's an objection, one objection, so Madam-
Councilmembers Susan Rubio?
It's not that I'm objecting, but I'm asking the courtesy of asking questions to give someone a raise, and I would like that courtesy. So I'm not objecting, but once again, I would like to ask, this is a contract that we're gonna give a raise on, I really would like to ask a couple of questions, so I will object because of that.
No, it's either US-
No, 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 you can't.
It has to be US.
It was your motion to bring this back.
Okay, so, got it, got it, got it, so yes, yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
No.
Mayor Manuela Sano?
No, okay, the motion fails 3-2.
Mayor, can I, can I just make a note? This is an item that we all adopted, we approved at the last council meeting, and so, you know, we just, we did have the courtesy at the time to review and discuss the items and the terms and everything, so.
But I do want to make it clear that Vice Mayor Garcia is correct that we did discuss this last meeting, but it did have to come back in this session.
All righty, okay, so at this point, we're going to go over to, so at this point, we'll have a motion to approve for the amendment for Mr. Yatzie's contract.
Second.
Any objections, see none?
Yes, I will object.
So there's an objection, all right, so Madam City Treasurer?
There's a motion by Ricardo Pacheco.
Yes, for approval, and seconded by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, and there was one objection by Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Two objections.
Hold on, that's okay.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Potem Monica Garcia? Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
No.
Mayor Manuela Sano?
Yes, the motion passes 3-2. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move on over to item, we have the City Council acting as successor agency. Oh yeah, let me just read this real quick, thank you very much. This is to announce as required by government code, section 54952.3, members of the City Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting, and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. So just want to note that, a particular section there. So at this point, the consent calendar for the successor agency. So at this point, I'll go ahead and motion-
Mayor, can I move this over to the next meeting?
You want to move this over?
Yes.
All right, okay, all right, so at this point, I'll second, any objections?
Yes.
Okay, one objection, at this point, City Treasurer, we have Cruz Baca, who's registered a, an objection.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
This is to move it over?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Manuela Sano?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
No.
Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
Yes, we can move it over.
Okay, so the motion passes 3-2, this will be moved over to the next city council meeting. All right, the, we have the public hearing, item six, which is conduct a public hearing and review the city fee services based on a study preferred by revenues and cost specialists LLC. So do we have someone?
Mayor, we're just asking that this be continued to the next meeting, September 7.
All right, so at this point, I'll make a motion to move this over to the following meeting.
Mr. Mayor, we have to open up the public hearing, and then continue it, and we have to continue it to a date certain place.
All right, so at this point, I will now open up the public hearing, anyone interested to speak?
We want to open up the public hearing, then continue it.
Or just leave it open?
Yeah, we'll have the speak at the next meeting, I'm sorry, Mayor.
All right, so we'll just leave the public meeting, hearing open?
Yeah.
All right, okay, all right, so we'll just move it over.
I'm sorry, I accused you, I'm sorry about that.
All righty, so we're gonna go ahead and move that over to the following meeting. So we need the motion anyways, am I correct? Or we don't, just move it over?
That is correct, we need a motion.
So that is my motion, entertain?
Second.
Second, any objections, see none, so move, all right.
And just so that we're clear, Mr. Mayor, the next meeting will be, because we need a date certain in the minutes here.
September 7.
Oh, you're right.
September 7?
Yeah.
Okay, so the date certain will be September 7 that will be moved to.
All righty, okay, so at this point, we'll go over to the reports of officers' approval and adopt the five-year capital improvement project, CIP, budget for fiscal year 2016-2021.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia?
I know we discussed this earlier, I'd like to just move forward with the item, and I just make a motion to approve this item, with the exception of the poll banners, which were 200,000.
Okay, second.
All right, and, okay, at this point, all right, so there's a motion, there's a second, are there any objections?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, Madam City Treasurer?
Mayor Potem Monica Garcia?
Mayor, can we have discussion on this item before we move on? Well, and this is one of the items that we discussed upstairs in the special meeting. This is to set the five-year capital improvement project budget, which means that this is where all the, all the projects that are gonna go on in the city get approved, and the reason that I had pulled it, and I think all of us agreed upstairs, to bring it back, because, you know, we were discussing it within five, 10 minutes, and we had discussed bringing it back in a study session, because they're very serious, not serious, but it's something that we really have to, really look into and be able to ask questions. We're talking about millions of dollars in capital improvement projects, and so I wanted the opportunity, and I believe all of us agreed up there, that we would take it back, bring it back as a study session, so we can actually have the opportunity to ask questions, and really look at all the projects carefully, whether it be pavement, construction, engineering, whatever it is. But I really think that this is really important for five years. If we're gonna be, you know, voting on this, it has to be in a study session, Mayor, because how do we make decisions on five minutes? And this is something that we didn't get, whether we got it in three days, four days, I think it requires special attention.
Okay, Mayor, let me go ahead and withdraw, let me withdraw my motion.
You want it, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to withdraw my motion, and we can spend more time on it. But what I would ask is that we look at what is a greater priority than that poll banner.
Oh, absolutely, and I agreed upstairs, because I was the one that brought up the poll. So I agreed that, you know, the alleys and some of our streets, maybe even the speed bumps that the, that the, that's what I spoke about. Maybe we could use it for that?
Okay, so can I move, can I move forward with the motion to bring it back as a study session? Is that okay?
Yes, motion's been withdrawn.
And so, okay, so, thank you, Monica.
Let's make certain, let's make certain of that, Councilmember Rubio, that we spent the hour on this, the full hour.
Yes, I agree, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
But we still need a vote and a second.
Right, okay.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, okay.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Everybody second. Any objections, see none, so move. All right, at this point, we'll go over to, we're gonna go over to the approval of the administrative policy entitled Baldwin Park Social Security. Can we move this over?
Yes, I second the motion.
Any objections, see none, so move. All right, so then we'll go over to, what I have here is the, I'd like to ask for an investigation into the invoices, contracts identified by Councilmember Susan Rubio at the last city council meeting, and I want to also include there Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco's request as well. But let me just ask to the staff that are here, some questions that I put together. So, number one, have you ever seen any illegal or fraudulent activity occur in the city? Now, you don't have to answer it now, I just want to make sure that everyone has this. And two, has anyone ever told you to do anything illegal or inappropriate? And number three, if someone did ask you to do something illegal or fraudulent, you know to report it to the HR or the CEO of the city attorney. Is everyone clear on that? Anyone not clear on that? Okay, I just want to make, I just want to make it clear, because of course, look, I personally trust each and every one of you, and I'm certain I could speak on behalf of all the council members here. I know this city is not like, I won't mention those particular cities, because good citizens reside at some of the cities, where unfortunately, these individuals took it upon themselves to do whatever they need to do that's totally legal. But if any one of you are confronted by an elected official here, anywhere, anytime, or made to do anything legal, you have the right to report it to the CEO, to the HR, legal attorney, go to the district attorney's office as well. But I just want to let you know that I trust each and every one of you. And this is a tough job, and yes, we don't fill in those invoices, that's your job. That's why each and every one of you make, make good salaries based on your experience. So, I want to let you know that, uh, and I want to make that, that clear, uh, for each and every one of you. So, if something is affecting you, your departments, or any of your employees, then we need to know it, because we need to make sure that we're transparent, that every council member here equally has all that information at hand for us to review. Is that clear to everyone? Okay, we'll make sure that gets across to the chief as well, when he's here. All righty, so that's the only thing...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, that's the only thing I have, I have to say, uh, at this point. Uh, so, so what I want to do is also, um, investigate, as we said, the, um, Bob Horwitz. And let me say one thing about Mr. Horwitz, and I'll say this. I know that the staff here were the ones that provided the recommendation. He did not. All he did was got it off each and every one of you, and he came to the city council. And, and, and I'm not going to go into any other area, uh, with reference to that particular individual, but, uh, he made off, he made off big here in the city Baldwin Park, and that's unfortunate, but that's, that's what happened at this point. So, at this point, that's the only thing I have to say, uh, for, for now.
Uh, Mayor, just the last item is, uh, I'd just like to have staff look more into the, uh, the success and the status of the street fair, and to see if there's any other options. I just think that the, the, um, contracts in the park and the street fair may have gone too long, and, and maybe we need to either, uh, you know, not have any more for now, and give a period of time, uh, to look at, but look at different options, talk to your vendors, and, and just kind of come back with us with an update on, on how we did overall, and maybe we could all, uh, have a study session and kind of look at how we could improve it, uh, to make it, you know, something different.
Oh, oh, go ahead.
I have a question on that, too.
Mayor?
That's all right. Um, if you remember, when we, it came time, when Greenleaf did their, their presentation, I believe the gentleman's name is Jerry, I was, I remember that I did not vote for them, simply because they started too early. I was concerned about the weather, because we were waiting for El Niño, which never came, but nevertheless, it's, it's too long. The kids were still in school back in April when he started, if I remember correctly. Um, the people looked forward to spending the summer. They were very disappointed. I, a lot of people were very disappointed. Thank goodness for Villa Mart with their beer garden that sort of brought some pizzazz into the situation, but, and it wasn't because of the beer, but it's just that it was a wonderful ambiance, you know, to sit there and, and talk to staff or friends or whatever. But I do think that every Thursday for almost a year is a little too long, and, and it's, it's a big commitment to make. It's, it's very difficult. We had something magical with the, with whoever brought it, but our staff did a wonderful job. Yes, it did cause the city some money, but the vendors, we had over 100 vendors by the time it ended last year in September. So, I believe that if it ain't broke, why fix it? That's my motto. So, we gave Greenleaf a shot. Yes, you know, what the heck? You never know. But I really do believe that if we bring it back, we need to give our staff again and bring that magic back with, to the residents, to our employees, and to everyone that had such a great time. So, that's my opinion.
May I add just one more thing?
Go ahead.